All right, thank you Councilwoman Smith. All right, we don't have any special presentations, but I do want to call on Councilwoman Burris. Hit your light.
All of my colleagues today received a bag with some goodies in it from the Family Justice Center. We are doing a proclamation on Friday relative to victims' rights. In Tennessee, family, domestic violence happens in one in three families. Unfortunately, it's going up for all kinds of reasons, which means that it's touched all of our families in some way. It's something that we don't talk about often. Partner violence is something that's a plague on our community in all kinds of ways. It touches the education system, the health system, the police system, and all forms of government. So, all of you are invited, this is a public invitation, for lunch at the Family Justice Center on Friday to help celebrate and bring attention to victims' rights. And it's my pleasure to gift my colleagues with this. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you so much, Councilwoman Burris. We appreciate you and the invitation. Can I have an approval on the minutes? Right, minutes stand without objection. All right, council, if you would take a look at your agenda for this evening. We have ordinances under final reading. And if there's no objection from council, we'll take items A through C as a group. All right. We have ordinances under first reading. Two of those are in District 7. I do have some amendments for those. I anticipate being able to make those amendments myself. That one. We do have one item. Item C, that's in District 9. We also have Public Works, District 2. Okay, we have Councilwoman Coonrod, followed by Madam Vice Chair. Thank you. We'll be moving to withdrawal. Okay. So, withdrawal for item C under planning. Thank you, Councilwoman Coonrod. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. We're going to have a presentation on item D related to the right-of-way abandonment and closure today during Public Works, but I do intend to defer it to next week so that both the request for zoning change and the right-of-way can be moved to the same week.
Okay, there we're, we looking for that deferral. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, we have resolutions. We have two under those items. Any comments or questions, hit your light. We have Parks and Outdoors, Public Works and Wastewater. Any comments or questions? All right. Council, if you will take a look at next week's proposed agendas. Any comments or questions? Please hit your light. Okay, purchasing questions? Any comments or questions? Right, if you take a look at future considerations, comments or questions, hit your light, please. All right, so committee or departmental reports. Well, first, we do have an announcement by Phil that he will need to make at our, after recess.
Yes, after recess.
All right. And then also, we do have an attorney-client after following this meeting. We do have a library update that we'll be doing in just a moment. Our social economic equity study presentation by Dr. Marcus Malden will need to be postponed. He's feeling ill, so he's not able to make it today. So, he'll have to reschedule that. And then we'll also have Parks and Public Works Committee today with Councilman Hester. So, with that, we do have our library update. Come on up.
All right, super. Well, thank you, guys, appreciate it. My name is Will O'Hern. I'm the Executive Director of the Chattanooga Public Library, and I'm proud to give you a department update from all of y'all, to all of y'all today. I do want to apologize upfront. I do, I'm fighting a little bit of a, I'm just getting over an illness, so I am a little hoarse today. So, but that, I wouldn't miss the opportunity to tell you guys all of the exciting, fun things we have going at the library. I have a lot to cover and not a lot of time to do it, so we'll get straight into it. For our budget right here, we are all online for both our revenue and getting to our $7.6 million there. Expenditures, we'll make sure that we do not go over that. Library is a really good steward of the community's investment in it. I do want to give a shout-out to our team for always finding ingenuative ways to cut costs, and particularly our business office for always cost-controlling. They're amazing at that, so I did want to publicly give them a shout-out for that. Really proud of that. So, budget, we're right online, don't expect to go over as we normally don't. Do want to cover our metrics here a little bit. Our circulation, we're right on target with that. We're likely to hit that $1.2 million. We also are right on target for our programming goals here as well, too. So, going to do great with that, especially looking at forecasting. June's a big month with our summer reading program coming up, so we definitely expect to hit those numbers. I will introduce you to new metrics that you'll see coming up in fiscal year '25. The one that we are going to keep is going to be that customer satisfaction. We are at almost 95%, 94.4. We always do a pretty good job in that area. We do think customer satisfaction and customer service is a cornerstone of what library services, and so we want to make sure to hold on to that one. And that's based off our feedback from our customers and comment cards, things like that. So, speaking of our metrics, I did want to showcase to you some of our new metrics that we have available today here, too. We have our ROI calculator that we have here. We're going to use ROI, return on investment, if you haven't heard that before, as one of the ways that we measure how well we're doing. The library, we had a question last time at City Council was, what do we get for the $7.3 million that we have? And we thought that was a really great question. And so, we were curious about that, too. We found some traditional library methodology to measure value. We took a look at that, ran it past Tim Orland and his team, and they said that looked pretty good. We made a few changes to it to fit our service profile. On their calculator, they didn't have a studio, so we added things like that, community passes, et cetera, et cetera. So, we did make changes to fit our service profile mix. The other thing we did is we eliminated some of the things they put on there that we thought were not concrete. So, we actually were like, we wanted to just do things that you could hold in your hand or find a commercially analogous example to. So, we wanted to cut all the fat and have a number that say, we at least generate this much value to our community, potentially more. And so, that doesn't encapsulate some of the softer things, like making sure kids have a place to go, off-the-street-to-go-to, early literacy impacts, a place where everyone feels welcome to belong. Those things are priceless. We can't really put a price on them. This is just those things you can find a commercially analogous example to in the community. And the other thing I want to mention here is that we scaled down some of the numbers. We thought they overestimated that calculator, so we really wanted to be conservative. Again, saying, we feel really proud and that we absolutely at least generate this much value. It was supposed to be a fun little show here, it's a PDF, but it was supposed to be like this big reveal. But just kidding, you see all the numbers in front of you right now. You saw my number here at the bottom. So, for the $7.7 million, $311,000, I'm always impressed when they read those numbers. I always struggle with that, so I'm always impressed they can get that right the first time. For that $7 million, $311,000 investment from the community and the library, folks get, if they were to purchase that privately, it would cost $18 million, $44,063. For a total return on investment of 246.81%, meaning for every dollar invested in the, from the city into the library, our community is experiencing about $2.50 worth of value from those services. I do want to say these are based off FY '23 numbers. We don't have all of FY '24 done yet, so we wanted to have a baseline number to showcase to you. We're going to take the FY '23, FY '24, kind of put them together, and then we're going to create a new goal for FY '25. And to show you the math, here it is. I won't go through these in detail. I only have a limited amount of time, and again, lots to talk to you guys about today here, too. But I wanted to show our math and how that all worked. Happy to answer any questions, how we got to any of these, these numbers afterwards, but I just want to show you how that all sketched out and worked out. One of the other metrics we're going to have is early literacy. We believe early literacy is a cornerstone of library services. One of the most important things we do is early literacy. And so, we wanted to track that, because when you track that, you can make better impacts on it. So, what we're going to do is do three things. We're going to create a two-to-three-question survey essentially asking, are our resources and programs helping your child with early literacy as they grow up? That's going to be showcased to kids after every program that we have. It's also going to be within the early newsletter, which is the second way we're going to track that. There's going to be a QR code in that early literacy newsletter, which also gives parents tips and tricks, things that our librarians know as reading experts to be able to help their kid, their child, parent or guardian, read to their child better and have them absorb that information better. That's going to be sent out for folks as they opt into it. And again, we'll have a QR code linked to that early literacy survey that we have. We're also going to participate in a more national program. It's called "A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten." There's research that shows that if you read to your child a thousand books before kindergarten, they're going to be kindergarten-ready, and that way, they're going to be school-ready. So, I know I myself read one book over to my child at least 1,000 times once beforehand. Shout-out to Sleepy Kitty, I've read that so many times. And we're going to measure that by the data, the numbers we get back from the survey. We're going to measure that by the number of folks who opt in for the early literacy newsletter compared to those folks who go to our programs, and the number of participants and graduates in the "Thousand Books Before Kindergarten." So, want to make sure to measure that. So, those are our new metrics for next year. We'll make sure to report on those as they come out. One of the things we're excited to talk to you guys a little bit about today is our outreach coordinator. We're actually putting a role together specifically for outreach. Outreach is a big area of growth for us. We've kind of been the victim of our own success that we've done so well with outreach. We get so many more outreach requests. We're finding we need a whole road dedicated just to this. Our whole goal with this is twofold. One, we know there's not a library in every neighborhood, and not everyone can get to all our facilities. So, we want to bring the library services to them to tell them, they belong in the library. We always say there's something for everyone at the library. If they think not, they just haven't found what it is. Maybe you don't like books. Maybe you like to rap, you can come rap in our studio. Maybe you like to make and create, or maybe you just want to go and read poetry, like we did this weekend. There's always something for everyone in the library, and we just want to make sure we showcase what that is to them. We also want to hit those non-users, those folks who don't think of the library. Sometimes it doesn't come across people's mind. We want to make sure to reach out to them and invite them into the library as well, too. What this does is ensures a strategic approach to outreach. Right now, we're just kind of being reactive. We're recognizing that this is a big area of growth for us, and we have to be more thoughtful. So, we want to get a position that really thinks about this in depth. We also want to make sure we get in geographically diverse areas, go to all the different districts y'all are in, to make sure all your residents and constituents get to know what the library has to offer. So, we're really excited about this role. We're currently interviewing for it, and we expect it to be filled in the next month or so. One other thing I want to mention to you guys is it's actually the 10-year anniversary for the Fourth Floor. And it's hard to believe it's been around. I remember when it first hit the library world, it was a big deal. So, we're calling it 10 years in the making for the Maker Space. Fun little library pun there, that's what we're good at. We love our wordplay. So, we are having four landmark, kind of trademark events, which is the Fiber Arts Bash, which happened on March 25th, late March. We have a qualifier there. Late March, we had about 500 people come through that, so people were looming. They were making rugs, doing a community quilt, learning how our sewing machines works, dyeing textiles, all sorts of different things. It was really incredible. And you see all these people come together in the community, and we even saw a couple of city councils come to here as well, too. So, really happy to have that, and that community came together and really appreciated that. We have our Zine Fest coming up here in May, our Maker Day, which showcases all the amazing things the Fourth Floor has to offer here sometime in the summer. And then we're having our celebration, kind of a party, a gala, if you will, a mini gala for the Makers Ball. It's kind of an ungala, because it'll be a lot less formal, it'll be just a lot of fun. So, if you haven't come to the Fourth Floor, their services are constantly evolving. I would definitely suggest that you come check it out, or better yet, come to one of these events as well, too. And last but not least, I want to talk a little bit, give an update on our family passes, our community passes. We feel really strongly that Chattanooga, we want to create a one Chattanooga where everyone has the same opportunities to go to the zoo, go to the Hunter Museum. Regardless of your socioeconomic status, you should be able to take part of the rich cultural tapestry of events and activities available in Chattanooga. And so, with that in mind, we want to check out these experienced people with your library card. You can go to one of these things, all of these five things, once per year with your library card. We've also added three new partners to the mix as well, too, here. Chattanooga Symphony and Opera, so you can go ahead and watch all the events we have available at our locations. Chattanooga FC, go ahead and watch a soccer game with your library card. And then the Lookouts. We've since added all those to the mix. We have some other partners that are coming online here soon, because we continue to want to expand this program. We think it's really important for us to expand this program. We think it's a way that we can, again, bring Chattanooga together to be one Chattanooga. And so, those are some of the new things, and be on the lookout for a couple of new partners coming online here soon. I have lots more to talk to you about, but I'm at my 10-minute mark, so I want to be mindful and thoughtful about that. Happy to answer any questions. Even with my hoarse voice, I could talk more about the library. Happy to answer any questions, and I want to thank you guys for your time and attention today.
Right, thank you, Will. That was a great presentation. We do have a couple of questions, so Councilwoman Burris, followed by Councilman Hester.
Well, not a question, a comment, and I want to say it publicly. You're a good friend, but also a consummate professional.
Thank you.
The stuff that I've seen you do, you had a hard row to hoe. And you've done it with class, you've done a great job. I have to tell you all that we had a big trunk-or-treat event in last October. And there were about 7,000 people that came, all over the East Gate, Osborne, that whole area. And it was a family event. And so, we were walking around, looking, seeing what works, what doesn't work, and all this stuff. And I said, let's check out the library. Will had thrown, this is a library, right? He had thrown open the doors to the library, and lying on the floor, all over on the carpet, were kids reading. They were all over, they were eating candy, reading. They weren't being, shh. They weren't sitting at tables. They were having the best time. It was like a sleepover, except they were reading and stuff. So, I think you should know that. Thank you for all the wonderful things you're doing, and for your friendship.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burris. Councilman Hester, followed by Councilman Leffert.
We had a meeting last week, and man, I'm still, I guess, still excited about some of the things we discussed last week as it pertains to the library. Man, you're doing outstanding job, just keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hester. Councilman Leffert, followed by Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will, great job. I feel like you are listening, or have been listening, and I think your presence in our council meetings is paying off. Something that I know you and I talked about even kind of in the beginning during the interview process. And I feel like you're embracing this community head-on. So, thank you, and I'm seeing the fruits of that labor. And along with your team, who's doing a great job, absolute great job, taking this information and really making the most out of it. I love the expansions and the concept and what's going on here. So, I just want to say, keep going, man.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Leffert. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I went to the Fiber Arts Bash, and it was great. I'm a fiber artist, and so it just spoke to my heart to go do some dyeing and things. I'm excited about the events that are coming up as well. A couple of questions, specifically about the early literacy work. How has summer programming evolved as families have changed? And I say that thinking about my own experience with summer reading as a child, when my mom didn't work as much in the summer, and we, she could drive me to the, you know, and we had our little passes and so forth. But that's not necessarily what families look like anymore.
You know, I think it's changed how libraries, because libraries have changed with their community as well, too. It's not just all reading-based. I think a lot of times, summer reading was just about reading. We actually tried calling it summer learning to kind of expand that, but everyone really wanted summer reading, recognize that, so we've changed it back. But how it's really changed is we've changed it to be more than reading. It's about literacy of all sorts of different types. We find different ways, again, you'll see, we're getting out in the community more. We're getting out and doing more outdoor storytimes, things like that. And so, we really, again, just like our outreach, we like to get more out in the community, particularly during the summer when the weather's nice. Sometimes a little hot, but that's okay. We like to go out and do those things, including gardening. And even our very own Lee Hope over there actually was scared about summer reading so much last year, she kissed a pig for it. So, that's some of the ways to answer that question. It's changed to update with people, just in terms of getting out in the community more and making it not just about reading, but literacy of all sorts of different types.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, access is always a question mark for me. And so, can you tell us about any progress you're making in terms of linking the library and our community centers?
Yeah, so of course, we have our Evan Dell Community Center that we have there as well, too. We're doing some, we were planning to do an outreach, unfortunately did have to get canceled for, boy, I'm blanking on the name, District 1, I'm blanking on the name of it, Lookout Valley.
John A. Patton.
Yeah, yeah, we were planning to do that as well, too. So, we're also talking about working with, it's not quite a community center, but it is the Heritage House. We're planning on doing some program as well there. We are installing a locker. We've had a couple snafus with it, unfortunately. We're planning on doing some programming with all our different lockers, and a number of them are in community centers. So, there's one that would be at Heritage House. There's one that's currently in East Dell Community Center. It is malfunctioning, just to be frank with you upfront right now. So, we didn't want to have an opening for that without it working well. We plan to do some programming at that, and then Lookout Valley as well, too. So, we're finding different ways to work with that through those lockers as well, too.
Okay, well, I mean, experimenting and innovation sometimes come with snafus, and we just have to be willing to learn, you know, and not be afraid of trying something new, just because maybe it won't work exactly how we want it the first time. And a final question that I've been asking for a while, adult literacy. Where is the library's head on adult literacy?
We've been actually looking a little bit about adult literacy. We've been looking into a couple of other fields with that. We haven't had anything, we've had a couple partners come up, but we haven't had anything that's been quite a match yet. So, it is something that's on our mind, but we don't have anything right now that we can point to and look at that say, here's what we're doing, but it is certainly on our mind. I was shocked myself to find there was not really any, a lot of adult literacy in our community, and that's something we need to fill. So, we do know that is something we need to put our shoulder behind more. Thank you for recognizing that.
Well, I guess, that was my final question, but I guess one other comment is that I feel a real heart with the staff that you have at the library, with the social media. I feel like the library and Parks Department are both really knocking it out of the park with social media and really sharing a very positive energy. And what I notice when I'm there is that it feels like you have a team that really loves what they do and they want to go the extra mile. And so, I just encourage you to nurture that as much as you can, because I think we'll see great things come from it.
Listen, I got to tell you, and I'm not just saying this, I have the best team in the whole world. This is the best library team I've ever worked with by a country mile. And I'm not just saying that because they're here, I would say that in front of anybody. It's the most passionate, mission-driven team. We always start with what's best for our community and work our way back from there. So, I want to echo your sentiment there. They're an amazing team, and I'm proud to be a part of them.
You have library people here, can they stand up?
Library people, raise your hands. Who's involved with the library?
Thanks, guys.
There we go.
That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. All right, Councilman Leffert.
Madam Chair, that was exactly what I was going to ask, if the library team would mind recognizing or standing up for us, because we'd like to see all this hard work and put some faces, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilman Leffert. Well, looks like you got out clean today. Congratulations to you. Thank you so much. And so, we've had that presentation. Now, we will move into Parks and Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome to Parks and Public Works Committee. Can we accept the minutes? Ordinance on first reading, Public Works D. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way and the 300 Tucker Street as detailed on the attached address.
Okay, we're going to have a discussion on this. Thank you, Chair.
And there's a presentation with about 10 slides that we developed with Public Works Transportation. I'm going to hit the first few, and then Chris Davis is going to address the rest. So, we had some questions when I went through the zoning case. We have two companion cases, one's rezoning, one's a mandatory referral. And council had some questions regarding the cases, the history of right-of-way abandonments in the area. And then we have a zoning case that affects one of those right-of- rights-of-way. So, we'll be working through these. There are two agenda items. The one, the Public Works Ordinance that just got read is on today's. The planning ordinance got deferred until next week. So, the rezoning is the whole lot. So, Tremont Street is to the right, Tucker Street is to the left on the site plan. The mandatory referral is just a little portion in the right-of-way, and that's not drawn to scale. There's some information in your packet, I bet, I think it's around, so, a little less than maybe 1,700 square feet. But just to give you an idea of how these relate. So, the applicant provided a site plan. As you know, the site plan provides this information, but we tried to look more generally at the site and not just the one specific project. But the applicant does show building a structure that fronts on Tucker Street. They would create a new lot if the rezoning gets passed, and then they're showing that structure in the right-of-way that's proposed to be abandoned. Just some context, we had some questions last night about, or excuse me, last week about Tucker Street. So, there's some additional photos from what we showed last week. And if you have some questions, I think Chris Davis took these, and he can answer a little bit more. So, looking north, the site's on the right. Those yellow signs are the mandatory referral and rezoning signs. And then the one on the rest, you're looking south towards downtown. Tremont Street is below. And then again, looking south, side on the left, and you're just kind of looking towards the curve. So, just a couple pictures to show you what's going on, because topography is part of the discussion. So, we had a question last week about, there's been a lot of activity. Our staff report showed a lot of activity for cases in the area. This kind of details a little bit more. I think there's between mandatory referrals to close and abandon right-of-way and then zoning cases where they address the right-of-way for a property to the south. There's quite a bit. I think just probably the most applicable are the actions by council. The green areas have been right-of-way that's been abandoned by ordinance. The property we're talking about is the little yellow circle. So, there have been some cases, had a mandatory referral that was withdrawn, and then two approved, and then the active one is shown in purple on that map. Well, I just had a question about a zoning condition. Again, there's been a lot of activity in the area. I think it's 309 Tremont is just west of the site. And there was a right-of-way that went, that completely bisected the rezoning area. There's a case where a condition went on it regarding a walkway. That case, we had a 2019 case where the applicant sought to lift that condition. The language shown in the box is the new condition that replaced it. And it mentions that the applicant will work with CDOT to help develop pedestrian transportation route in that area. So, one of the questions council asked was, how is that condition being addressed? That's specifically put on five years ago. And just noting that permitting in the city's permitting system, it's flagged that that discussion be held. So, the comment, the applicant will work with CDOT to help develop. So, we spent a little time talking about that as staff and the intent, but it is flagged in the permitting system that that discussion must be held. But we don't have a result of that discussion yet. And then I'll turn it over to Chris, and then I have two slides at the end, just some more information on the zoning case.
Yes, the mandatory referral, the main problem that we were seeing with this section was just the steepness of the slopes. It starts at 2:1, 3:1 slope right there at the edge of pavement. And there's, and that was, it appeared to be the reason for the additional right-of-way through there was because of the slopes. And we did come up with, at the bottom of the page here, if the council did want to approve this, we would want to add a condition that said the applicant or developer would provide a geotechnical engineering report detailing the long-term slope stability of the adjacent portion of Tucker Street, the proposed driveway connection, and the proposed building, and construct all elements recommended for the development by the report. So, basically, we would want the slope stability of Tucker Street to be built into that development. Because there's basically no way to develop that section that we can see without dealing with that slope. And I'm open to any questions about that in particular.
Were we going to talk about that next slide, Alton?
Sure.
And then, I had mentioned that staff was viewing this. It's kind of connected, because the applicant's site plan showed the, was using the right-of-way abandonment as kind of part of their area to put the home. And so, this is just using GIS tool to determine the areas, a little bit, almost 9,000 square feet. RTZ zone allows a lot size of 3,000 square feet and has reduced setbacks. So, even without the mandatory referral, if the right-of-way is not abandoned, there does appear to be enough lot size if all the other subdivision requirements can be met that you could create two lots with the existing square footage. So, all that to say is the RTZ zone, even without the mandatory referral, only the property as shown could be subdivided if you can meet all the other subdivision requirements based on lot size. only the property as shown could be subdivided if you can meet all the other subdivision requirements based on lot size. And that's all we have, if you have any questions.
Vice Chair, Jenny Hill.
Thank you very much. Um, the, this case, I, I think it's important that we're discussing this as a council on the public record, because it is complex, it relates to steep slopes. Um, it, 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 we need, we need a public conversation so that as we make decisions like these, we, we know why we made those decisions. Um, so, if I could, um, first, the condition that, should, should this council be willing to abandon right-of-way? Um, what I'm, what I'm understanding you to say is that this is, this slope is so steep that the city originally likely uh kept this right-of-way because we may have, at some point, need to stabilize this road, or developing on that space could destabilize that road. Am I understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, the condition that you have offered for consideration, when we say that they, that the developer shall provide geotechnical engineering report, et cetera, et cetera, that what you're saying is that as one of the conditions would be, you have to stabilize Tucker Street at the curve if you want to build in this right-of-way? Right?
Yes, ma'am, at, at least that portion in front of their property.
Okay, okay.
I don't think we could have them stabilize the whole, the whole curve, but, but in front of their property.
Okay. Um, and as Karen and I have emailed about this, my understanding is that, you know, i- if we were to not abandon but go to RTZ, it would potentially impact further down the slope, um, if, if we didn't abandon, because they would have to build closer down. And then to go back to the slide about the zoning condition status for the al, additional piece of property that is intended to make a pedestrian connection, um, I think it's worth noting that Tucker Street is a one-way street. Um, it was basically created for wagons, I think, at very low visibility on a high hill. So a pedestrian connection to Tremont is, would be very beneficial to the community. Um, for that, uh, that project, permitting is flagged for the require, is for the applicant to have a discussion with Public Works and Transportation. Is that part of receiving a certificate of occupancy? Like, this needs to get done before you get your CO for the townhouse complex that's being built right now?
Yes, that's, that's the way I would take it.
Okay. Okay, I think that that answers um all of my questions. Yeah, I think I'm good. Thank you very much.
So you're good, Madam Chair, my, Madam Vice Chair, excuse me.
I, I am, uh, I am good.
Okay. Thank you, Karen, thank you, Chris Davis, and thank you to Scott and Ross for what you do for the city, and all those who are in your team, too. Appreciate it. Uh, this include Park and, Parks and Public Works Committee. Uh, we will meet at 5:30. We have attorney-client meeting. We hit the scalp. 5:30.